I said it pretty good. I'm pretty sure it's back. I'm trying to do it. Was it on? The text not written. But that, three times two. That now, yeah. Finally got yours, right? Yeah. All right. Uh, do you?
Yeah.
Adam number four, public hearing for fiscal year 2023 budget. This is a public hearing, so when I get through my pot, I guess y'all can, uh, anybody who wants to make some comments or voice their opinion or give us some good suggestions, we welcome that. Just as a matter of housekeeping, I made a copy of this, put the news page in August eighteenth edition. I got a copy of that notice that was sent out and... So, a tax rate of zero point five two nine five seven for a hundred dollar valuation is then proposed by the government body of San Francisco County. It's called Superior Commission Court. Hard move. Put that off. And the proposed rate is zero point five two nine five seven for one hundred dollars. The no new revenue rate is zero point five oh six five zero for one hundred dollars. The voter approval rate is zero point five two nine five seven for one hundred dollars. Voter approval rate, this year, the voter approval rate and the proposed tax rate is equal. You can't go over it unless you want to trigger a rollback, but it's equal. Last year's tax rate was zero point five seven seven nine. We came down point oh five, five points, we came down. And that's obviously because present districts have been busy with values of the county. I told them they've went up, collected three hundred million dollars. So, in order for that goes up, we need most every year, go down. To try to offset that, we have rules we have to go by. Even though the rate's lower, we're going to bring in a little more tax revenue. Uh, things keep going up, but that's kind of the way that works. The no new tax, revenue tax rate is the rate for 2022 tax year that will raise the same amount of property tax revenue for San Jacinto County for the same properties invoked 2021 and the 2022 tax year. The voter approval rate is the highest tax rate San Jacinto County had got without holding an election to seek voter approval of the rate. The proposed tax rate is greater than the no new revenue tax rate. As I said, the no new revenue tax rate is a rate you would pass if you only wanted to have the same amount of money as you had last. This means San Jacinto County is proposing to increase the property taxes for the 2022 tax year. You're one of the few, I guess, whose value did not get raised. You wouldn't see that much of an increase, but it actually valued to change. Last year was five seven seven nine, and we're proposing point five two nine. At least on the county's portion of the tax bill, you see a difference. A whole lot of people's rates did get raised. The proposed higher tax rate is greater than the no new revenue tax rate. This means San Jacinto, I may have just said that, proposing to increase property taxes. Public hearing on the proposed tax rate is being held today, August thirty first, now applied. The proposed tax rate is not greater than the voter approval rate. As a result, San Jacinto County is not required to hold an election, and which voters may accept or reject the proposed tax rate. However, you may express your support or your opposition of the proposed tax rate by contacting members of San Jacinto County at their offices, the office, the officials, or by attending the public hearing and hearing them. Your taxes owed under any of the rates mentioned above can be calculated as follows. Property tax rate times taxable value divided by a hundred. That's how you come up with what your taxes is. And when we, we had a meeting here, uh, a few weeks ago, when we, we actually decided this was the rate, we weren't going to go any higher than, and we set this hearing to date. And myself, Commissioner Mars, Commissioner Montego, Commissioner McAllen, Commissioner Brandon, we all set this hearing for the day and put a ceiling on the proposed tax rate, not go above the voter approval rate. All right, I have a, you don't have to fill out one of these on this day, but Mr. Peter filled one out anyway, so, uh, you can help us with a comment, Mr. Peter? Uh, who's better? Tap the mic, see if it's on, Mr. Peter. I don't know if it's on.
No. Well, I'm sure you can hear me.
This lady, this lady I hear, she, she can't hear.
Okay.
Oh, before you start, there's one more sentence I suppose to read here.
All right.
The proposed budget, just keep your seat, the proposed budget will raise more property taxes than last year's budget by six point two percent, which is eight hundred sixty five thousand oh fifty-six dollars. And of that amount, three hundred thousand five forty-one is tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax revenue. Members of the public are encouraged to attend and address their meaning and boil this, David.
I'm not sure, but can you hear me?
I can hear you fine, dude. I don't...
I think it's all back there.
All I can do is what you probably already done, check.
I think I can switch on that.
No, it's all right. Oh, he's talking about the six of them.
Yeah, it's got a little bit of light there, but I don't see the light, huh? Just talk loud, I guess.
All right. Good morning, y'all. Uh, I'm...
Can you hear what you're saying?
Look, 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 back here.
Little bar, not here, man.
I can't hear you. You can't hear me. Come up here with me.
Oh, I can hear.
Oh, I can't.
Can we sit here?
I can't hear hardly here.
As I said, good morning. Uh, I know that you're, uh, used to seeing me up here, uh, talking about our county ever since I moved in here in twenty, uh, two thousand and five. I've been here seventeen years, and, uh, one thing that I've noticed in our county ever since I moved here is the fact that our, uh, police department that used to be in Shutter, and now our, our sheriff's department is, uh, desperately underfunded. And, uh, I, I am very, very concerned about our community that is growing and progressing, and the people moving in here and us not having some adequate security, uh, for our citizens. Uh, it's my understanding that they cover well over, uh, two hundred square miles. That's what they're expected to cover. They need officers in order to do that. In order to get officers...
If I might point something out, I think the county is like six hundred and forty square miles, if I'm not mistaken, so they responsible for the whole county.
Right. Okay, all right. Uh, anyway, uh, we need a way to be able to successfully recruit people that are qualified or, you know, subject to being qualified for our county and our sheriff's department, uh, and that will want to stay here. And the only way that that's going to happen is if they're offered a decent living wage. And it's my understanding now they've got a slight, uh, increase, and, uh, that increase is still not sufficient for anybody that's raised in the family and, and, uh, trained to survive in, especially in this, uh, economy. So, this is a vital part of youth and, and youth in our judiciary representatives and trustees. There is money that can be allocated to the sheriff's department to ensure that we have the security and the safety that our citizens here in San Jacinto County deserve. And without your support, it's almost as if you're wanting to defund the sheriff's office. And I know you can shake your hands, but there's money that could be allocated. You have, uh, an enormous amount of new grants that you've never had in the history of, uh, of the years past, and of this money is being allocated, and the other grants in other departments in other directions. How much of it is going to the sheriff's office? The American Rescue Fund, and I, I know that you keep saying that the American Rescue Fund does not permit any monies to go to the sheriff's department or their development.
I've never said that.
Well, there's a number of commissioners that have said that, Your Honor, and, and there's a number of other counties that have used those funds to better themselves, and you, David, are the one that just said not very long ago that, uh, these counties were having to pay back the funds that they had allocated for their own enforcement. One thing that bothers me about grants is you know what the grants consist of. We, the general public, do not know all the ramifications and all of the exceptions. And is that transparent?
While he's doing that, I'm gonna try to answer that one point there. I don't think anybody ever said couldn't do this. These are monies that we're going to get this one time. We don't, I don't, I've never seen this federal government hand out five million dollars like this. It's, this is, this is a product of the current administration, and we can't count on it ever getting us again, I don't believe. I don't have the government, the country to sustain that much giving away of money. So, to, to, you ever raise based on money that you're only going to get one time sets you up a disaster the next year, we won't have to be able to fund it. That's, that's, I think, and I'm pretty sure Mr. Brandon shares that in his business. We don't, and we are, the sheriff, you've been here every meeting, so sheriff came in the last meeting, and he's been working his tail off for getting a contract with other counties to bring in some income on, on the jail. We not only get tax revenue, we get it from tickets, from filing deeds with the clerk, filing lawsuits. We also, when we built the jail, we built the jail, and this is for the benefit, you've heard this speech quite two or three times, but the rest of the folks haven't heard, uh, we built the jail, we've, we've got, the jail commission came down on us, I guess it's oh five, oh six, they came down on us twice, and we built a jail, we went from twenty to fifty-four, and that lasted, that was a band-aid, that was a few years, and then, next thing you know, we were Sheriff Rogers and I, several other commissioners were making multiple trips to tell the jail commission what we were going to do, and anyway, they said, we all know this, so let's, let's do it right this time. So, we built a hundred and forty-four man jail, and we have, we have a certificate of obligation issued to fund that, three million, about three million dollars, and paid out over, I don't know if fifteen years, paid out last year. Now, we're reaching that, that point where we envisioned back then that we were going to have some, some money that we could do other things with. And I'm telling you all this because he just draw a contract, I filed a proposed budget, which had no raise in it, August tenth. And at the last meeting, I believe, we were here, the sheriff dropped back the second proposed contract. It's going to generate, if he got every nickel that thirty inmates at sixty-five a day would produce in one year, that's seven hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. We don't ever count on county government on collecting every hundred percent of any revenues from us, so what I'm gonna propose today, and then the hearing that we're gonna have to present the budget, is put in about three hundred and fifty thousand of revenue. Anyway, then we're gonna, I'm gonna propose, and I don't, I think the court probably agrees, a raise, some raises. Uh, the only ones that got raised is last year when we, uh, the jail, and that was done on a purpose and basis mid-year. Or, anyway, go ahead, go ahead.
Jailers got about six thousand dollars late. The area was up on the board.
Yes, but the jailers aren't the only ones that need a living wage.
Living wage, I hope, but there's a lot of other county employees that need it too, besides that, so.
We're gonna propose that now as we have, because last year I put in the budget jail revenue of two hundred and fifty thousand, and as of the time, filing the budget, we had, we'd collected two thousand seven hundred dollars. How that he's gotten a good contract, then we can rely on that. I don't, I believe he'll keep them. I don't think he's going to send them home next week unless we get the raise, but that's, he's not, he's a man of his word, and I believe everywhere we go.
Well, one of his handicapped claims, President's claim, is the fact that he needs five jailers. He needs people that are qualified for that position, and, uh, you're expecting him to build a jail with a hundred and forty-four beds. And if he were to do that, it is mindful understanding that he would be in violation of doing that without having adequate manpower in order to meet the criteria for whatever the stipulations are. And the only way we're going to get the personnel that we need in the sheriff's department, as well as any other department, is to find people that are qualified and people that have the old-fashioned stick ability. They have to have an incentive to stay here. You're in the process of building an innovation center for economic development, and you're in the process of offering all kinds of different classes where the majority of the people still don't know what the innovation center is going to consist of. Uh, you've reclaimed it to me, and you've reclaimed it to the people that were present when you reclaimed it.
Let me give you the latest update on that. We had a meeting this, this, this morning, and we went through all of the middle, finally got EDA approval to use. There's two, about two government entities involved, we're using funds from the Department of Commerce, that's the EDA, that's the original two million dollar grant. Since this thing started seventeen, prices have gone up, so now we're at about two nine. Good night. Before we, uh, the Department of Commerce gave us approval to use American Recovery Funds, we've done the budget overruns, and that, and we just, uh, we're getting ready to issue a notice to proceed to start that. I've had, I've had my secretary, there's been others wanting to look at whatever paperwork about that, all that, I've got the whole, I got a good bit of it, I got a box of stickers, paperwork, uh, and the plans, et cetera, and so forth, but I can't just give everybody a set of plans unless they want to pay for them. What it costs to have all their plans generated, all of them, yeah, I mean, here's some, somebody asked, if you're willing to pay four hundred dollars for a copy of, you can have them, or you can come look at my set.
I will bring them and you can display them, everybody can look.
Sure. Anyway, well, I'm not, listen, and one other sentence I didn't read here, it's posted down here, maximum five minutes per person in consideration of other entities, just if you got a group that you're speaking for, you sign one individual to present comments on behalf of you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right. Uh, the other thing I'd like to bring to your attention is this sheriff, ever since the day that he was elected, has not sat behind his desk and do nothing, sheriff. He has generated beaucoup funds for the county by being the sheriff and having the support that he needed for a lot of drug busts and a lot of other things, uh, a lot of things that, uh, people bring in, paraphernalia into our county. Uh, and what I don't quite concede, uh, when he is generating funds, why his funds have to be deposited into the general fund instead of him being able to utilize the monies that he's generating in order for anything?
Let me add that for you. So, I don't know if a county employee that works any harder at their job on a day-to-day than our tax collector on and off twenty years. So, she collects about nine million dollars over in her office. Under your theory, and she collected it, she ought to be able to spend it on whatever she, that's not how county government works. We are all pulling this wagon together, and not every department brings in a whole bunch of money, but their jobs are important, but that's just not how the legislature, the constitution, and all the laws that deal with how county government runs, works. You don't, you don't, you just don't. They used to have systems like that. Constables and deputies used to get money for every walk back in the John Wayne days, you know? They got ten dollars for every guy they arrested, no real car burners arresting like nobody's business. That leads to potential for ratting and corruption, so it's just not how it works. If you don't know, but I've seen it, that you were aware of it, but go ahead.
Okay. Well, the fact that I'm trying to bring up is, uh, our sheriff is worth every cent that he has made, and our sheriff's department is worth saving. And the only way that it's going to be saved is if you put yourself in his position and you are trying to operate an efficient operation of the sheriff's department, uh, maybe some of you would like to trade places for a day or two in his position.
He couldn't give me his job. I wasn't on his job, nothing, and as far as how hard he works, and I think the first week he saw a guy trying to break into the country at three o'clock in the morning, so I ain't got no problem with it, sure. You asked about the budgets that I was giving him, money, but nineteen was butted to nine six seven, two million, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars, one hundred and thirty-one dollars. The next time we stand around, and anyway, right now it's three point two million dollars. And he's got the jail, gets two point one four million. If you're talking about five point, right at five point five million dollars, our total tax revenue is nine point nine million, so he's getting half of it. His department that he's over, getting over half of the total complete tax revenue. I mean, it's not like we're holding back. We're just a core county, you know? That's all I'm getting at. That's all I'm getting at.
Well, the thing that I would say in reply to that is, the monies that he has brought into the county, I mentioned it saying, it probably exceeds what, what he's supposed to.
It's not, there's no workplace, no, it's just not happening. He, he brings in a lot, but it's no workplace, five million dollars. He's just an entrepreneur, you know? So, I was thinking, I mean, it's, it's a tally, the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that he's bringing in this year to begin that revenue. That doesn't include all the simple ones that's been there, that seven hundred and fifty thousand, by the time you cut the back of the law school, you already save about three hundred dollars off. That's all the much further debt. Yeah, when you say, I borrowed a million dollars from the college one point eight eighty, you get what you need, you need revenue, you just off source your cost, it's not a lot, and that's, that's where time, you like to, nobody's hard to make it, it's just you got the whole overall picture, not just one little snapshot.
Well, what you say with the new people moving into our community, and, and when they're, they moving into our community, unless they're over sixty-five, they get that on their taxes, and those taxes, aren't they adding to the county's revenue? Uh, and, uh, what, what I'm getting at is, we need security. He needs all the help that he can get, and the only way that he's going to be successful is if the sheriff's department has a living wage over and above what their starting pay is now, if they have qualified people, uh, that people need to have an incentive to stay here in this county instead of being recruited by our school districts and our adjacent city school districts where he is shorthanded and unable to do the job that he's elected to do. And, uh, I'm going to protest until I die, until we see results.
I agree with that last point you made.
I agree with that last point you made. The same tax dollars that I pay on my taxes go to the school boards. You agree?
I agree. And we've had that.
So how, so my question is, and I asked this question again last, that's the initial to where we mentioned before, how can, how can they recruit our people that work for the sheriff's department and offer them more money? It's the same batch of tax dollars.
Well, see, I wasn't aware that that was happening.
You think that that's right?
No, I don't think that's right. I don't think it's right that Willis is recruiting our.
I, I don't either.
Uh, and, and, no.
They took some of our very good officers that we had in the sheriff's department.
But the reason that happened, they didn't have any reason to, to stay. If, if you got a chance to get a raise.
Mr. Deter, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not questioning you in that. All I'm saying is it's not fair for the taxpayers to pay the same amount of taxes in a school district, which gets about sixty-eight percent of our taxes, college. They come over here and hire our employees and pay them $62,000 a year. Well, we can't afford to do that. And it's sad. It's absolutely sad that they do that.
So what's the remedy?
Mr. Deter, I can't answer that. I know since I've been on this court, since I've been on this court, I know, I'd venture to say we've probably given, we've bought twenty to thirty vehicles since I've been on the court.
I mean, I've been on one.
I have a good time. We voted to give a $5,000 across the four grades that we voted for and give the sheriff's department to try to get qualified people. I know every year we try to give a little raise and I hope this year that we can do a better raise. I really, really do. But it is just not the sheriff's department. We got people that work at these county offices that buy the same eggs, the same meal, the same fuel as people that work in the sheriff's office too. And I'm just, we have the same people that buy the eggs and the milk and the bread. Everybody knows what the cost of living is now, everybody. And we're going to try to address them that today.
All right. Well, my rebuttal to that is do they strap on their pistol every day? And do they have a badge? And do they go out on domestic calls, which is the most dangerous call that an officer can make? And, and, and my heart goes out to anybody in this influential area in Texas. Thanks to the Biden administration, I can't help but get that in. Uh, but, uh, I, I'm just telling you that we need to do something that's constructive for our community, for the safety and the security of our community. And, uh, you've heard what I have to say, most of you agree with it. Thank you. And thanks for the additional plan.
Yes, sir. As fast as anybody who's next.
Yes, sir.
Now, if I'm talking too loud.
Hello, everybody, here you are, ma'am.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, my name is Sherlaine Duffney and I live in Shepherd. And I've been in San Jacinto County about twenty-five years and I am retired. But due to disabilities, I am not able to work anymore. And I'm three quarters of a century old this year.
She, she, she worked with J.B.'s office.
But my concern is, in the last four to five years, my property valuations have been going up and up and up. And I have protested, but for me now at my age, and I'm starting to feel that reduction in ability and, and, you know, motivation and energy, well, you kids are young yet, but you know, it becomes a point in everybody's body that the deterioration is just what it is and you do the best with it that you can. But anyway, my concern is, and right now my evaluation is just right at that limit, twenty-five thousand dollars, twenty-six, whatever it is. And I know it's going up to forty. But my valuation used to be, well, no, I'm talking about the state limit. Uh, but it used to be my valuation's like eighteen thousand dollars, you know, or sixteen. And, and it's gone like up that far even with me protesting.
Ms. Duffney, let me just say something.
I can't hear you, honey.
If you don't know this, whenever you reach sixty-five.
Well, I am, but the point is, is that once you get above that and you start paying taxes, if you can, you know, they're delayed, but I don't understand all of that.
You should have a homestead that should see, it should freeze your taxes on your own.
Well, let me, I can't really hear you except that last year my taxes were increased to twenty-three cents. I had to pay twenty-three cents last year. So, you know, well, this, I paid twenty-three cents. I came all the way up here to pay it because I wasn't sure I should write a check for twenty-three cents. So, okay. So if I don't keep protesting, that means my valuation keeps going up. It is.
Your valuation may keep going up, but they can only tax you on the value that you have at eight sixty-five. It's supposed to be froze if you file appropriate homestead papers. Now, that's only for your homestead. I don't know how much land you own. If you've got other property besides homestead, I feel your pain because I've got property.
All I, all I know is that I hadn't paid taxes for probably five years, what, five years, and now I'm starting to pay taxes. And my problem is, is that my property is deteriorating like I am. And I don't have, in, in Shepherd, there's not a lot of resources unless you hire somebody that's a contractor, you know, that's expensive. But to find an ordinary handyman to come and do things, it's very difficult. And, and then you don't always know what you're getting either. You might have a worse situation in the end than what you had to begin with. So those are concerns that older people have that can no longer take care of their issues. You know what I mean? Their maintenance. And so, but my feeling, my big, biggest problem is, is as I'm getting older, will I be able to, of course, stay where I am? Because I'm on social security and it's adequate. But right now we're getting into a downturn in the economy, inflation's up, and it's not just here, it's globally. And things are happening with our food supplies, uh, the drought, not only here, but in all the other countries as well. They're not able to maintain their crop levels. So our prices for food are going to continue, I believe, to be very high. And what's coming, energy wise, we're selling our gas and our oil now, but those, being they selling that is affecting the stock market as well and the prices we're going to pay. So even though it's coming down, you already saw what it did, up to almost four, four dollars a gallon. Now it's threesome. It actually, I think, was over four, it's a fi, almost five dollars. You know, and these things are not going to go away right now. And with the, you know, the interest rate hikes, they're saying the rest of this year they're probably going to be hiking and probably into next year. Jobs are starting to be lost because right now the bigger companies are laying people off because of the interest rate and the fact that they have. So this, this is one of the things too, right now, we're kind of on the edge of the cliff. I mean, and if our valuations keep going up, where does that really start? And it, it concerns me because I want to be able to feel comfortable being on my property, that I can stay there until the Lord calls me home. But right now I feel like, you know, I don't like to fight every year to go and do the protests because for me it's a big deal, you know, it's hard. So where do we have relief? You know, I, I can understand some things, but like I said, now this last year's the first year I pay taxes, I probably'll have to pay some this year. But where does it go from here? And that's my concern because I just, you know, my, there's a lot of people like me who doesn't have an, I mean, an overabundance of funds to take care of things. And so you come down to a point that you have to make choices. And that's it. And that's what I wanted to say. Okay?
Thank you so much. I don't know, ladies first, sound of a guy. Come up, young lady. I'll get to you, but I.
Hi there, I'm Edith Kyle.
Yeah, Kyle.
And, uh, yes, hi, K-Y-L-E. And, um, I'm not sure I'm in the right place. I know I have already been over to the tax office and we did a, uh, thing earlier in the year and looked at the flood maps. This is on a, uh, camp house that we have. Their flood maps show, from FEMA, showed that there's just a little bit of water that's up on the point of our property. Our property kind, kind of comes to this point right here. And according to their maps in San Jacinto County, over there at the accessory's office, a little water comes right from the edge of it. Well, the whole place goes underwater.
Well, you know, that's, I mean, the good Lord, we don't know how much rain is going to send down. It may flood one time and the next time the rain's focused up there in Point Blank and it don't, or, I mean, we've got no control over how much rain that God sends down.
Absolutely. But we do have control over the maps that we use. FEMA, I've been dealing with FEMA and they told me that the tax appraisal office is using the, uh, flood insurance maps, which, which is the flood insurance rate map, which shows that there's not much flooding because they're trying to keep the insurance rates there. This is what San Jacinto.
What FEMA's done is they keep redoing the maps and showing more flood areas so they can charge you higher rates. Cause after Harvey, they took a bad, and that was a flood like we've never seen before. And I, I get it, but.
This is what the tax appraisal district shows floods on our property.
Ms. Kyle, first of all, the tax appraisal district isn't the one that gives the flood plan, that's the flood plan administrator, permit office does that, okay? And what you're looking at there is a firm map that doesn't even exist or what we do before because they're going to a different, uh, OBL, base level engineering, okay?
This is.
And that, and that makes the latest determination because they don't use.
And it shows water with ninety, nine inches deep, right here.
Where's your, where's your camp house at?
It's over off of nine forty-five.
At Creekwood.
Yes, in Creekwood subdivision. And the tax.
Creekwood.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that one where Thomas.
Yes, yes.
Well, we, the county had to buy some of that, FEMA bought some of that out.
Absolutely. And the property values this year went up from $2,600 to $15,720. Went up four, a six hundred percent in one year. This is the land because they have sold that land back out and letting them put it back on the market.
Not, not the county stuff, they did. County still got about ten acres and it'll be there in perfect.
This sounds like it could be in downtown Denver or someplace.
You need to be protesting at crazy, yes.
I did. And I also have dealt with FEMA and FEMA told me they're using the wrong maps. If they will let us, we will come in and let them know they're using the wrong map. And I've got no.
I misspeak that a bit, not one bit, but you need, but you need to go, you need to go to permit office and get the right map so you can take over the phrase, so they can see.
Okay, how do they get?
Because they're not flood plain people, period.
Then how do they use that map? Because the people that are down in there that are building, right map? And we tell them it floods? They say, I went to the appraisal district and they tell me that.
Those folks, well, that's one of those, because I talked to all those folks, and they, and they, they got in the corner of Winter Creek, Creekwood down there, where he's building it. I've seen that at least six foot deep right there.
He gets that, they just build a road trying to get into it.
That's why, that was one of the first BLE areas we came into when we was working on that because it makes a big difference because the wood firm, it doesn't show that area, but you get BLE, definitely does. But that's the flood plain administrator, flood plain mapping should come from the permit office, not here. They are not, they have nothing to do with.
But they're the ones that sets our tax. Oh, I'm here at the.
They set the thing.
That's right. And so they need the right maps.
Well, and that's what I'm saying. You go to permit office, get the right map, and then match your protest, take the tax office. But not there, they don't show it off, it's all they have.
All right, well, it's, it's like everything else, you just get moved from one spot to another.
Well, it's, it's always been a permit.
They did, years.
Okay.
Right, they bought a state comp bill or?
What?
They did state comp bill, the same district.
Your president didn't state comp bill.
Why wouldn't they have it?
Well, we can always check toward the Belton board that's here at the permit office. Two different things.
They wouldn't have, I know, but they wouldn't have a, a current, no, I know the other county's good.
What?
Why wouldn't they have a current flood plain map?
You go online for them, tax office going there and pull them.
But why wouldn't? Jump down on the back row.
Good morning, I'm Richard Ratcliffe. I live in the corner of the county down here, ten ninety-seven and one fifty. I appreciate your attention to be able to listen to everybody. I'd like to bring this feeling back on to the point that you first presented, that I am vehemently opposed to raising the rate of, on the, uh, on the hundred dollar rate on the taxes. The reasons for it are that everyone's property value has been raised, as you saw, you did generate more revenue. But secondarily, and the most important thing is I've heard from people at the tax office that, you know, well, we've got more than forty percent of this county is the, uh, you know, is the, is the parks department and wildlife and, and, you know, we can't draw taxes off of that, so it's reduced the size of the tax base. Well, the elephant in the room is, is it's the industry and the creative jobs and an example of an Amazon warehouse that went to, over there to San Antonio as far as I know. Nobody in San Jacinto County even applied for that. We're taking the county in the wrong direction. You're getting ten to twenty percent more revenue off of industry than you are off of what you're collecting in property taxes. There's many cities and many counties that do offer incentives to bring industry, manufacturing, and everything else. The biggest bonus that we have is the, the wildlife and the federally funded, uh, land out there because we don't have a carbon footprint in this county. We have a negative carbon footprint because of all the trees and everything else. So if we weren't, we're not trying to reinvent a wheel here. As I stated before, there are many cities and many counties that give property tax incentives, sales tax incentives to try to bring industry into their county, which again is going to generate ten to twenty percent, or ten to twenty times the amount of revenue that you're going to be receiving from, uh, single home dwellings or from ranches or anything else. So if we just, we take the direction of this and go ahead and start advertising, then we have a negative carbon footprint in this county and then we're willing to work with businesses and industry to bring them here, to create the jobs, to create the sales tax, that would generate the revenue to offset the costs that we've all been talking about. It would solve our problem greatly.
How long have you been in the county?
I've only been here six years, but I've, I'm.
Probably ten or twelve years ago, we passed, county is, as an entity, passed, uh, tax incentives to bring in into industry and stuff. We've had two applications. The problem is the county portion of the taxes is very small compared to the school. None of the schools agreed to go in on that. So the incentives that we can offer is.
Minut.
Minut, very good choice of words. We've been there, done that, we've tried it.
Okay. Well, you know, I've been in the census business for thirty-five years. I'm retired medically now or I'll be back in business. And the, the school tax has never been a portion of any more incentive that I know of. But as we're coming up to try to get the country more green with less pollution and everything else, it's not only the, uh, the sales tax and property tax incentives that you would put in place for three to five years to get us to build here, but again, we've got the, uh, big carbon offset because we have a, a negative, uh, uh, carbon emissions in this county because of all the wildlife and all the property and the, the, the federal property that we have here. So if we've already got something in place, I've never seen it, it needs to be revised to include this and needs to be put out there so that businesses seeking a new place for, uh, industrial. uh, industrial or manufacturing jobs will know that they can come here, make the application, and solve the problems that this county has.
Can I, I don't, at least a while ago, you heard him talk about the innovation center, you know, out of here.
Yeah.
That is one of the primary purposes of that innovation, what I call innovation, because it is to bring organizations like SBA and other, to help us economic development to do exactly what you're talking about here. You know, Mr. Peterman was talking about bringing, you know, more businesses in, okay? That's one of the main purposes of this over here inside the U.S. Okay. Also with the, called Texas Ford Country Partnership, it's all a length of an economic development. That's what we do, you know, the border map, we bring, try and put people and organizations together to come into this region and using the national force to step in, Tyson and spend those dollars, struggle, okay? South end of the county, you got Burlington Northern Railroad, which will come in on Liberty County, coming from the countryside. That's going to, do a lot, bring a lot of industry, you know, the south end of the county is close, Monopop shop, mechanics, everything, things of that nature. So it's coming in, moving from, using up this way. But that's the main purpose for this, to bring those organizations in. We did do the fact, I don't even show them, but we did a zoning, a zoning, we did, and we invested some. I've also heard of, uh, what they call P R Z, translation, we invested some.
There's a certain, I mean, we, I represent all the constituents here in the county, not just the ones that just showed up. There's a lot of people that actually like the fact that they can walk out and see to dear on the edge of their property. And, I mean, the growth has some, there's people, there's some people that don't want, you know, they like it like it is. I don't want no more people. I mean, how do you balance that? That's a tough job.
I'm gonna every day.
Well, it's, it's a zoning issue, uh, but the thing about it is, 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 I'm glad that you worked on this ten or twelve years ago. I'm glad that we've got the innovation center. But you haven't advertised it. I can't go on the county website and look it up and figure out when the innovation center is going to open. They proposed on September fourth of two thousand seventeen. And exactly what line item issues they're going to be addressing. So I, 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 you know, I don't know whether we've got a, a county person who handles the, the P R for the county or what we need to do to be able to, all the hard work that you've done, get the word out there so not only the people of this county, but, uh, as ever has on, as you said, SBA and Chamber Commerce and everybody else's website, to try to draw the people in to make the application.
For the work that people are doing.
Kind of bringing it over there, like Judge said earlier, we had a meeting yesterday and we started to establish timeline because we had to wait on the multiple federal agencies before we could do that, okay? We've been putting the tree line out, so, uh, thanks for your back there. And we're looking at a October first, wasn't it? Or October-
I'm waiting on them to send me the notice to proceed so we can finally get that thing moving.
And it'd be about ten months to be, so we've got to schedule it. So if we start in October and ten months, that's all it should be.
Okay.
Then, then we go and start looking at, you know, operations, because right now there's two people on the county and the board for, for, under, what, Dettoff, they're, they're, you know, and, and myself, we're the Dettoff for these things. But we gotta have a place to put it so we can put the, in place so we can start developing that. The national force isn't someone from going there, or we have done here recently, walking on, oh, yes, the problem. For example, in thirty-eight, one, that is massive clearing there, that's, and river's about, gonna be a giant subdivision. And actually it's not. What it is, is carrying in is a business into, into our national force because the gentleman who owns that property, the board, has a guy that manages the floor that has three quarters out that work in that place. It's gonna be a thirteen thousand acre ranch. And they've already planted about a hundred and twenty acres of long, big pine, okay? And they're putting in native grass, they're on the walking trail, they're gonna do a lot of stuff out here. But the public can go out there and actually go through the nation border. You got nine thousand acres of that grass right outside of Oak Tree, which is the same number. And he's gonna put in like, right now, three thousand acres, but this one be his home spirit.
Yeah.
So there's-
They're very, they're very serious, I think, they're talking about thirty to fifty acres back. I think the time's coming, I mean, have you ever been down around two forty-two, all that, and there was a hundred thousand acres of forest, but now-
This whole thing?
There's houses popping up there. It's coming. I mean, it's coming.
That's what he said.
I think the economy drives the whole load. There's some things you could do, but I think with Amazon, they know, they know how to acquire property and, you, you know what I'm talking about.
Well, I, I do, but again, you know, if, if we've got the incentives in place, let's put it all together and get out there and advertise. We don't have, have a building, you got a website. You know, let's go ahead and list how to make the application for these, uh, things that you've already appropriated for, uh, you know, go ahead and, and, and find out from the environmental protection agency in this county what our negative amount of carbon is and be able to put that on there as a draw and, uh, you know, get the ball rolling. So we're not facing deficits and problems and massive raises in, in your, uh, home, uh, property, uh, taxes, you know? Let's, uh, let, let's create the jobs, let's create the industry, and let's let them pay part of the tax of what you're trying to do.
I agree, it's hard to hang on to anything away, it keeps you going. I'm sitting up here in town on stuff Daddy paid fifty dollars a acre for back in the thirties and they, it's twenty-five thousand a acre or something like that. Such. People are coming in from California and everywhere else and driving all of our property values up, but, I mean-
Well, I'm probably pushing my five minutes, but my main point is, is please, please do not raise the, uh, park per hundred on top of the big raises that everybody has had in their property value.
We're proposing to go down five points. When the value goes up, we pull back every single year, we pull back.
Right.
I mean, when I first got here in oh-four, I think the year before they were at point sixty-six. So over that time, we dropped from point six-six, where we proposed a point five-two. You know, we, you do understand, and we can't, it's hard to operate on the same amount that we had last year because sheriff's gas is, is double. On the go, but it's double.
But, you know, I, I-
Right now, hopefully we'll get away from this inflationary period, surely can't keep going forever.
Right. Well, you know, I, I completely agree with the first speaker about funding the police in every way possible, but that's kind of taking away from, from the point. That's one perspective out of many different bills that the county has to do. Road maintenance, mowing the grass, everything else that's involved. But, you know, my point is, is let's get the advertising out and keep the, the rate per hundred as it is or less than it is and invite more industry and business and figure on getting the revenue from the sales tax at ten to twenty times the revenue that you're going to be receiving on individual houses.
We're already experiencing increases in that. You, you may not believe this, but I think we've tapped into Amazon. I think that's our lead, the leading, uh, sales tax revenue is now from Amazon Center. So they've been a, a big plus to, to the county and everywhere, I guess. Kinda, that hurts the local Monopop businesses though, but I'm telling you, Amazon is, uh, doing a lot of business here.
Right.
So I expect that to keep growing as our population grows.
I understand, but, you know, had we gotten the Amazon Center instead of San Antonio, you know, we'd have thirty-five thousand jobs and the sales tax off, that would have been much, much more than just what people in this county buy to draw. And, because that just really takes you back to the point. Let's keep it as low as possible per hundred and do everything to put out there or advertise, which has already worked hard to get as far as the, uh, getting the draw for new businesses, industry and, uh, mechanical or whatever else get the draw in this county to provide the jobs and the revenue for the county.
I think the reason I hadn't set up right now is we don't have populations that support a lot of other infrastructure and things. They just put all those distribution centers up there. And that, but the ground they came with.
Yeah, they love it over here.
Well, it, it, they're feeling that for the future, that, they, it's gonna be there and then the demand gets up, they're gonna open that thing up probably in a couple of years. I mean, it's, it's ready to go, but they, they can't wait till they need one and then it's, oh man, we better build a building.
Well, you know, with this county split with forty-five and fifty-nine, there's plenty of interstate highway access for these large, uh, businesses that are in here. So we're, we're, we're setting the right plot. We're, we're carbon negative, so we don't have an issue with E P A. We've got everything done correctly. We just need to get the word out there and not raise our-
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you all there.
Ms. Bar, uh, Ms. Bar, you wanna speak?
No. I'm listening right now.
Okay.
So my name's Ray McCuffin, I live in precinct one. And anyway, um, I'm gonna start out by saying that-
Talk into the microphone, maybe.
Okay. So, um, yeah, I, I got this notice, uh, read the notice, and I, I was just curious about it and did a little research on it and different things. But, uh, first of all, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna start by saying, my taxes are frozen. I'm sixty-seven years old and my taxes are frozen, but I'm gonna tell you, the, the anticipated estimate for taxes this year went up thirty dollars, even though it's frozen. And the reason for that is the E S D, Emergency Services District, doesn't breach your taxes. So that's the reason why your taxes went up. As you're back, the other side of it is Emergency Services District is, is at ten cents for a hundred dollars valuation, which is their maximum.
They've been at ten since they started.
I, absolutely.
I suspect they are in rollback gear, but I don't think anybody wants the ambulances or the fire trucks.
No, no, I, I, I agree with you. And, and even as a senior, you know, I, I, I want the ambulances to run, don't get me wrong. But I'm just trying to explain to, to, some of the other seniors have said the same thing to me. They said, my taxes went up and mine went up about thirty dollars, so, this year because of, because of that, because the valuations went up so much, but the tax rate is at their maximum and they don't participate in the freeze. Just, just for information purposes.
They don't know that it participates in the freeze.
No, sir.
We might even additional, do participate in that.
Yeah, I, I don't know if it was because they did it when they, when it was created or, or how, what, why. I don't know the details on that. So, anyway, but I was, I've been thinking about, you know, all this tax rate increase and all these things and, um, one of the interesting things is, that I saw was on the back page. And, and I kind of put some, two and two together. I was at a meeting over at Republican headquarters with our brand new state senator, Dr., uh, I'm gonna probably hack his name up, Schwimer, I believe it is. Anyway-
Fellow from Williamson County or?
Yes, sir.
We're now part of Williamson County in that senatorial district.
Yes, sir. I think it's, is it five, seven? I don't know, I believe so.
Yeah.
Anyway, um, he came out and made a statement that, said that the controller, Hagar, Controller Hagar, had announced that the, I'm gonna say the, the surplus at the state level was fifteen billion dollars. The economy in, overall in the state had recovered that much and it was in excess of the actual monies that they needed to spend. So anyway, uh, the, the dots I kind of put together was-
Mr. McCuffin, did he also point out that they don't have a three point five percent cap that the, the legislature imposes on us?
Uh, no, sir, but I'm, I'm gonna get there with you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to steal your thought.
I'm gonna get there with you. Anyway, so, yes, I, I mean, our state representative and our, our, our senators were, were very happy in two sessions ago, I believe it was, where they kept the, the, uh, increases for counties at three and a half percent. Now, the devil's in the details. When I say the devil's in the details, on this last page, there's some things about, it says, the state criminal justice mandate. And actually, there's an adjustment to the, um, the, uh, let's see, what'd they call, no new revenue rate based upon monies that we, the county, spent on inmates that had been convicted and sentenced, but weren't going up to the state, or to the state penitentiary.
Or housing.
And we're housing them. And it says right here, it says three, uh, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars were spent by the county on that. And then also the indigenous care, we spent half, a quarter billion basically on that. That's, that's a million dollars. And the state has excess funds and surplus, uh, I, I say we need to get on the phone and start calling our state representatives and their senators and say, hey, help us out, pay some of this money back to us. Um, that's what I would say.
End of point.
And so, that's just a suggestion and that'd give you a million dollars that we didn't have and maybe we can help people out.
You know, we had that same, when you were commissioner, we had that same problem with, we were purchasing routes from Hicktop-
Yeah.
-which is state, that we had already purchased as individuals. So it's the same thing, we're paying twice.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
And you get nowhere with them. When you call, no offense, when you call Kevin Brady's office, they put you on runaround for five years. I've been there.
Kevin Brady's our U.S. representative, but, yes, sir.
But he's on the federal side of the, of, of the state highway out here, where the federal is putting eighty percent of the money into it and the state's putting twenty percent into it.
Yes.
So-
So I encourage you, and, uh, this next session, I'm probably gonna be making a few trips and if y'all wanna come, I'll drive.
Let me know. I'll do it. I love you, okay?
I mean, I, I think a call from a, from a commissioner or a judge-
Yes, sir.
Would do a lot of good.
I'll go.
Okay.
Let me know when.
All right.
Probably all, all need to go.
And, anyway, uh, so the other thing is, I'm gonna tell you, I, uh, I printed out my own copy of the notice and, but I also posted it on Facebook. And anyway, I'm gonna tell you, Facebook, I had a hundred and, hundred and one shares on Facebook, people shared it. And I, I'm gonna read a few comments. These aren't particularly my comments, and I took people's names off, but you can go on Facebook and look who said it if you want to. Anyway, and none of the comments are really, uh, I'm gonna say motivational when it comes to, to increases of the tax, taxes. So, um, I'm just gonna read a couple of them. And it says, one of them says, you gotta be kidding, property tax increase. And then, that's kind of, it goes on from there. Another one that says, uh, seriously, this is insane, like the government already taxes us for everything. Blah, blah. I only got five minutes, so I'll try not to go too far. Um, you know, as, as well stated by these people, seems like we're becoming less of a, uh, less of a free country and, and more like just paying rent to be here. So anyway, um, one other point I wanted to, to point out to y'all folks while I'm here, and I'm gonna say, I'm actually looking- I'm actually looking at the, at the local government code. And it's, uh, Title Four, on finances, and subtitle B, county finances. And specifically, Chapter fourteen, one-fourteen, which deals with.
One-fourteen?
Yeah, one-fourteen, which deals with financial reports. I'm not gonna go into great detail on this, but there are a number of reports that are specifically called out to be published on the internet website. We're all, I'm gonna say, y'all aren't really doing it. And this is all kind of, I think it would give the people more of a warm, fuzzy feeling, if you would, than anything, you know? Some of these, some of the finances of, um, I'm a past county commissioner, I kind of understand the, the finances of the county and how the whole system works. But, a lot of it would probably be not understood by people. And I understand that at first it may take, you may get a lot of questions, but eventually, I think it would help with the clarity on some of this stuff and.
What section of the government code are you talking about? I'm sure being, what I look into.
I'll give you a copy, I've got some places hot, if you have this copy, good. Anyway, I, I've also looked at some of the other counties' website, particularly Hope County, which by the way, lurks like it, uses exactly the same software that y'all use and everything, and their website is much better, much cleaner, much more to the point. And a lot of those reports that I'm talking about, there are on their website.
Hope County usually sees it just like.
Yeah.
Most, most, most counties just.
Oh, no, I mean, they even use the same background.
We've all, we've all admitted that the website needs to be drastic, all of it is just, really, there's a lot of clutter and stuff down there. It, it needs to, there needs to be some people coming together to actually do a website development, and that's what's lacking. And I'm not saying people aren't doing a good job, it just needs to be refreshed and all of that.
I don't, I don't think we claim to be an expert in that, that I'm pretty good. And I would, uh, volunteer to help if y'all so desire. That's all I got to say. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you for letting me speak.
It's sitting there too long.
Yeah, it doesn't take long.
Uh, Tim Cooper, I'm in Sugar Mill subdivision, um, and in preparation to come up here.
Which subdivision?
Uh, excuse me, that's the old subdivision, uh, I'm in, uh,
Lakeview.
Lakeview Hills.
Oh, yeah.
Lakeview. I was just real quick going over, uh, any articles I could come up with, uh, in preparation for any thing that I might be able to request it, uh, from you people. And I did come across a bill from the governor, I think it was bill number five, um, that proposed a three percent reduction on taxes, uh, in order to offset, you know, possibly raises and, uh, property value raises and, and things of that nature going on. Uh, are you familiar, help me educate me on what that bill?
I haven't read the bill, it does surprise me that the state government has proposed such a thing. We have a responsibility to our citizens to provide the emergency management services, for instance. And the state helps fund. By the way, our, our, we're gonna vote on our budget August thirty-first, next week. I mean, September seventh. September seventh, sorry. September seventh, nine o'clock, right here. Okay. They fund it, they give us ENPG money, well, the, the state just decided to create a hundred and thirty-four positions in the county as kind of a position as a guide of work with our county. And you know how they're gonna fund it, they're taking away our funding, so they can, and if you listened long ago when we talked about, the state imposed a three-and-a-half percent cap on, on, in other words, whatever our taxes are, we can only raise three-and-a-half percent more. They don't have such a cap. And as Commissioner McCopan most eloquently stated, they got a fifteen-billion-dollar surplus. So it's easy for them to sit up there and propose that we cut our taxes even more. While they got fifteen, we don't have a fifteen-billion-dollar surplus, I promise.
Yeah.
But go ahead.
Well, that's, the thing is, I'm not totally literate of, you know, all the governmental things that are going on there and, you know, I, that's why I was hoping to give a little better explanation as to where that three percent, you know, decrease is happening.
Every, well, that's something we'd like to see everybody but them do, I guess. Every year the legislature meets, it seems like they pass more rules that we have to do. They call it unfunded mandates, and we get them all the time and we, you know? The federal government does the same thing, with all the rule, I think somebody talked about, Ms. Kyle talked about flood maps and, and so on and so forth, and, and, uh, FEMA kind of regulates all that, that flood control stuff, but they're passing down all these new regulations. We have, we're gonna have to hire new people to go out and inspect when you build your house, if you're building in a flood zone, make sure, you can be in the flood zone, but you gotta be like three foot above the expected level, you know? So you don't flood. And now, I think, they gotta go out, what, three times? Three times. And we don't have the, we're struggling to, to try to keep, keep what we have and maybe give them a little bit more, uh, so they can pay for the, they can deal with the doubling in the cost of gas that we've ever seen one of us as experienced in the last year. And eggs and everything else, just, anyway.
Yeah, I understand it's politics and it just goes on and on.
And they're right, explain a little bit of that a little bit more, what you refer to them since they're tied. Two years ago, they had sent a bill to you, and that was bench voice, the O M P, that the one with the property tax problem was. With counties like us who are generating, have revenue, it costs that, we talk about.
Right.
So this kind of re-rotation of that, I already, probably, legislative.
Okay.
They're gonna be working on that more, you know, just like just there. We're sitting in this hour by April of next year. We're gonna have, probably, we're gonna have a building vote in this county that wasn't ever done before. Because, you know, because changes happen to flood maps and stuff. And so, there's a lot of moving parts here that don't happen right now, not fine now. This will come up to like this year.
That's what I was hoping for, is a little clarification as to, you know, that you guys are committed with those bills and, uh, how they expect you to lower any, uh, state work, so, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
So, so Mr. Cooper, where's your, where's your residence at?
Uh, Lakeview Hills is down, what county road?
Two-two-four.
No.
I'm just making sure. Lakeview Hills, okay, I thought you said Lakeview Estates.
Lakeview.
You're off of fifteen-fourteen. Go down the hill, turn right.
Right. Past Hughes.
Yeah, that's Precinct One.
I'm sorry.
Anybody else got any public comments? According to, uh, we've had a public hearing today, uh, and then we're gonna, I know, I know, I've already announced once, but we're gonna hold our, I've already hosted the agenda, September the seventh, at nine o'clock, our meeting to, first of all, adopt the budget and then set the tax rate. And that seems, according to Texas Comptroller of Public Account, Publication Ninety-eight dash ten-eight-two, the governing body holds this meeting to adopt tax rate must be held not later than the seventh day after the public hearing. So, that's seven days from now. I don't know why, what the big, I don't know why they set such a short window. And here, I guess, I guess, uh, what it is, what it is.
That's pretty short, they're like.
Yeah, so, so anyway, we're gonna be back here, uh, hopefully, trying to, and we'll have a cool forum that day, I presume. Some of the board have, I think, vacations planned for a little bit later, so it's good in their respect that we wanna have a cool forum, we want to do the best that we can. Like I said earlier, I got, there's some that don't wanna raise nothing, and there's some that wanna do more for the law enforcement. I get it. Well, when I filed the proposed budget on August tenth, we had no contract with, with any counties to bring in additional revenue or, uh, jail bed spaces for other counties inmates, but since that time, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, Sheriff has worked very hard and secured a really good contract in Liberty County. And since I didn't have that information when I filed this, I'm gonna advocate, we're gonna have that budget here, where we take some of that revenue and give some of the sheriff's office a rate, give every employee here some type of lease credit.
Where's King, how many, how many inmates have we got in Liberty County?
There's nineteen, I remember.
That's why, and, and I'm gonna propose, if he had all thirty that the contract calls for, that, and they would be here every single day for the next year, that would generate seven-hundred-and-seven-thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. We're never gonna have a hundred percent, nothing, I don't care what you're doing. It's gonna be my position to argue that. Channel, well, I put, I said three-fifty, but yeah. Three-fifty, four-hundred, whatever, we have some other money that I believe we have a contingency line, if coupled with that, we could give a decent raise, but not, not just for everybody in the county here. Now, when we put raises in the budget, that does not mean that, that any particular elected official who is supervising people will give the employee that money right then, America. They may say, "All right, you got this raise, now you start doing this, you're doing that, and when you get that CDL license or whatever," but you can have the ability to whack an elected official feels like. Give them, give them some incentive to, to do, to do better.
And the reason is, is because of Treasurer, I asked her twice about that already, and she said if we do it in the county law ways, that she was afraid that, that they would come back and say, "No, it's county law, so I get it all, then there's cap, anybody getting involved in it." I thought I'd rather do mine as American.
It doesn't apply to you, to you.
That's all I'll make sure.
There's a place, there's a blue form or something we fill out and, and, and we say, if the wages.
I think that's legal.
There's a form for it.
Yes, some don't pull that away. Yeah, I agree. I'm, I'm, I'm all good with that, that's one thing I want to add. Actually, we talked about that last year, I wanted to say, make sure as we do, to give this people a raise, if we're gonna report time. That's, you're the part, and that's your discretion to pay attention to.
Right. That's right, you got so much in there to say enough. We do have, there are some stipulations about, you know, if you got forty thousand in wages, you can't.
Give it all at one.
You can't give it all at one, and over, over whatever the set, set, the max salary was, you couldn't take away the, yeah.
But that's why you put it in a line.
Yeah.
That's right.
That's probably what you have.
It's a cap.
Alright. Then other things that, uh, so we're gonna hang one, we're, now we're gonna, I just have the mod money and the recovery related there, it's general federal. That's why, that's why we have, I like baseball game, that's why you play the game. We don't have anything else, I've been okay emotionally, sir.
To touch on some stuff, or?
We certainly can, I just.
I absolutely, if you're gonna adopt the budget Wednesday, I need to make some changes. For example, I put the detention into eighty hours, it needs to be eighty-four hours. Um, y'all entertaining a raise, y'all want it in here now, if it's not in here now?
Yeah, I, you can't, you can't really predict what the budget's gonna look like to get those bigger. I just, I thought we had this conversation, we're not gonna know what's going in that budget. You don't have to have the final budget already ready for that meeting, it's just gonna work that way.
Are you gonna adopt the budget on September seventh?
Yes, and it's gonna be, once here plus whatever changes are made.
I think she's just trying to get a hit, trying to get something.
I know, I know she is, but she's.
Yeah, well, they cram down her one time, all at once.
Okay, so can I at least change the detention, is that correct?
I'm sorry.
The detention, I put the raise in at eighty hours, y'all approved them to get one at eighty-four hours, so I need to adjust that. I at least put in the revenue for inmate housing.
Would he make the changes on mine that we talked about?
If they approve, you can age, full-time person, that's. Y'all wait till next week, that's fine.
Uh, if you wanna go ahead and pencil in a, uh, three-hundred-and-fifty or four-hundred, I wouldn't want to do much higher.
I'm gonna go with three-fifty or four-hundred.
Put, put, put three-fifty in for the inmate revenue as opposed to that zero we got.
Okay. Can I fix the detention or not?
Go ahead, we're listening, we can't hardly hear you.
Is it okay if I fix the detention salary, I know that it's not correct?
Well, that's right, we're doing it.
Get the mic, this is what you're asking.
We're supposed to do it within seven days, this, this year. We don't, we got a long day. Mondays, holidays.
What, what'd you say?
We don't have that four.
That was your catch question?
There are some things that need to be, I thought we just were gonna hang all that out on that day.
We'll do it next week.
It probably will be, I mean.
I guess, I, I understand, we'll do it next week.
But I know this is your first budget, but you're never gonna have a document that's got everything in it the day you vote, it just does not happen that way. That's, you'll have to the end of the month, you get all, all.
But I'm actually sure.
You know, there's no pressure on you to have something done.
You asked about the sense.
That's why we give up.
Why you asking, I never was asking. Hold on, Mark's got a question.
So, I'm just looking at the proposed budget and the percentages of the tax rate. I realize that we can't go over three-point-five percent, but I wrote the bridge rate, but it's only down to thirteen-point-three. But I know we, we get two cents for the tax, and he's living on three, General Fund's over three dollars, and ours is always getting right at three point six. And I wish he does that to, to get below that three point five, but.
And General Fund goes down every single time, but why would you think yours would stay somewhere and General Fund keeps going down?
Yeah, I just bring that one up.
I don't calculate.
It's loaded, you know, it's, it's, that's, that's what we're loaded, right?
That's the ma, that's the max. And I don't do the calculations, because Davis has a, a calculation worksheet that's that thick, and, and that's how, she generated the numbers, I have nothing to do with those. I do know every year when we have to go down another, because of the cap, General Fund goes down every year. There's no way Road Bridge would not go down some significant, not, not huge, but some amount. It should be, if we're out of the same rate of declination. During our last three or four workouts we've had, I think most of the departments we settled on, there's just a few things that we've done. Yeah, you're right, it's been fixing, these are important issues, and it's gonna take a lot of force to do that.
So, is today the time that you need to come out and say that what kind of raise we could propose, or like tonight, or put a little figure in there? I mean, is that something that we?
I'll say, I'll say it, some of them are asking for ten thousand, some for six, but the budget, if we take that jail revenue rate, the budget will support a four thousand dollar one, and we've never done that before.
We're, 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 we're here from people who said, and we, we are other people, you know, everybody here works, so we, we know, we know what we're dealing with. But, we, we gave the dispatcher, no, we gave James three dollars, and I think we need to give everybody else three dollars too.
Six thousand, six thousand dollars.
And we need to figure that. General Fund can't afford that, y'all can afford it, Road Bridge, and if you wanna do that, I tip my hat to.
We, we need, we need to figure it out, uh, and one thing that I wanted to talk to Sheriff before we get out of here about was, we put a stipulation on that three dollar an hour for detention center. If they haven't had a license, one thing that we would like to do maybe is to change that to say, if you've got somebody going to school, and they're doing you a good job, you should, you should be able to give them some of that. But not to hold three dollars until they get the license, you agree?
That's an incentive.
Try to keep them, keep them going, you know, hey, you're doing a good job, keep up the good work, you know?
That's an incentive.
Instead of holding to the beat until they get the license, which could be the year, right?
Yeah, because they're having a drive over here to get them.
Yeah, we, we can set something up, yeah.
So, I mean, the Treasurer right now says that they can't get the three dollars until they get the certificate. But we need, I think, I think we still get the ten percent.
That's something on that, look, yeah, I'm, I'm, I already started, finish after the budget, we'll do that in that possession.
Yeah, I see what you're talking about. You know, but I'm kinda like, I'm, I'm kinda like, uh, some of the rest of the board. You know, we, we kinda set a precedent on raises, uh, I don't think that any one person, uh, back to Mr. Digger's conversation this morning, uh, those people choose that job, in my opinion. So, my people choose the job to be an operator. Because you're in the sheriff's department, and because you're in Road and Bridge, or you're a janitor at the, the custodian at the courthouse, nobody is better than the other person. We all work for a living. We, we out here to make a living, and that's why we work. So, just because, I keep hearing this, they straddle a gun every day. I understand that, that service is out, that's not that important they do that, for jobs out here. My people haven't said that, my people at Road Bridge is just as important, the taxes, census, collectors people are just as important as any department in the county. So, having said that, we kinda give a three dollar an hour raise, in my opinion, that's what, that's what we need to stick to.
I was almost just getting by and over, over going, start group, for one group, and not doing.
Well, that's.
That's, that's just not good.
Yeah, but you gotta be able to fund it, depending. Y'all figure out some other place we've got money that I don't know about, I'm, I'm.
We're about to plan that out.
Go ahead, man.
Okay, you know, you can have a person that, as secretary, you can have a person that, you know, and a, a sheriff. When there becomes a demand for that type of work, and the shortage gets there, that job that has the shortage or the demand is going, you're gonna end up having to take more for those office people. And you might call it, well, it looks like you're giving a raise, but what it takes to hire a qualified person, whether it's a secretary or whether it's a police officer, you have to evaluate that, not to say, well, we've given them a raise. It's what it takes to fill that position with a good qualified people. And there is a shortage and a demand of police because of the pressures that's been predominant, and we may not have up it for that reason, not just call it a raise.
Well, if I throw something out here, we can hear about, about the demand, you know, yeah. It's a well-established point, the form on here in this county as far as jails and jailers and stuff like that, is happening all over the other counties throughout the state, it's not unique to us. Garrett County's thousands of people around them, um, that are waiting, they're dispatching, they're forty percent stat, okay? So, it's not unique to us, everybody's going through it, because all these places got this, got these funds, and Hope County's finding that, well, it's just ten thousand, gave everybody a two thousand dollar raise, it's worth it.
Yeah, yeah. I know they were giving a ten percent raise.
Let's see, they, they took theirs out of a different fund.
I don't know.
They took out a different one, so they have the revenue there to do it from last year, okay?
Are they gonna be able to sustain it? Probably not. You got to look at what you give this year, if you're gonna be able to do like the same, can you sustain that in a row this year? Or you're gonna be back there doing the same thing you did. It's not just us, as soon as you hire a veteran here, and we pay fifty cents an hour, the next county over, they're gonna go to the next county over. We already knew that our jail would be paying more here than what they were over in Hope County.
We see, like, I made that comment a while ago, they only had to go to another county, they just go to the school.
Well, and that's, that's like Mr. Digger was talking about, the, the, the raises versus the school. If we got the tax money that schools do, wouldn't be no problem to us either. But if you look at your tax bill, your school taxes versus your county, and I can assure you, your county tax is probably maybe, uh, less than, I, I would say your county tax is about twenty percent versus your school tax.
Sixty.
Can I make one comment? About Pope County? You look at Pope County, their, their sixteen million dollars debt is way. And most of it on tax notice service.
Yeah, we got a big.
They're, they're, they're taking Pete money from Peter and paid Paul.
That's exactly right, and that's what we don't wanna do for some point in time, it's gonna come back.
It's catching up, it's gonna catch up though, it'll catch up.
That's a good point.
I thought they were taking another company.
It's, I mean, you, you, you go to their debt page, and it says sixteen million dollars debt.
Oh!
We don't have anything on it. Well, I can tell you, these commissioners are such a, uh, I think y'all have the same view I have about debt. I mean, yes, we didn't get it down there, but I don't operate too much debt in my, my life, so. We only have one guy that's got debt service right now in, in the precincts, and that we paid for this year, is right, so.
That's ten million dollars.
So, we, we actually, we, we take their business.
On a three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar, three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar.
You can't give raises out of the fund balance and stay out of that, it just, it just doesn't work that way.
Well, that's not where I'm going, I'm just telling you, when, uh, here, 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 there's, what about the fact that you're in debt for a million dollars?
Come up here, we can't hear you. What about what now?
You're in debt for a million dollars? You know why we borrowed that million, the first four hundred thousand was from Sheriff's Bernard?
I don't know if you.
They had the note of, it didn't be paid off in over a year, sir.
Do you even know that? We sat up here, we talked about borrowing, we talked about borrowing like four or five hundred thousand dollars to pay for this, get this thing over here, help get it started, that we had to match money on. And we all come up here, we said, well, since we're gonna borrow four hundred, at a half a percent or somewhere percent, or point nine, whatever it was, real money.
Less than one percent.
Less than one percent. We all said, no, we said, since we're gonna borrow four hundred thousand at less than a percent, why don't we just borrow a million, take four hundred thousand dollars of it, and purchase sheriff's vehicles? Did you know that?
Well, I know that you allocated four hundred thousand dollars to.
No, we didn't allocate it, we bought four hundred thousand car.
Okay, uh, but what about the million dollars and it being a revolving charge card?
Huh? What are you talking about?
Well, when you borrow a million dollars a, and you want more money, uh, isn't a revolving charge card?
Do you know why we, do you know why we borrowed? You know, you know why we, you know why we borrowed a million dollars, and I'll tell you why. We all sitting here, and we all thought about it, the jail note was done, it was our last year old jail note. So, we said we can help right now, the sheriff's department, help fund this over here, and take the money that we was paying on that jail note and pay on that. Is that correct? Sure is.
Well, listen, y'all, we've got our budgets here, y'all wanna sit here and talk about the budget, just go down to it.
Let's go. I wanna take a break real quick when we get started, can you do that? Is that allowed here?
Sure.
Alright.
I won't get you a hiss, boys.
Only out of the public hearing, so we're having to give them that, 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 I mean, uh, used to, ladies in both parks, they stayed there for ever, and now, but every time you turn around, they got somebody new, because they're going somewhere else to make more money.
You handed that, you was kind of, yeah, you're part of your court board, like, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. Court reporters, the district judge, man, when they got a, a job doing court reporter, they stayed there for a long, long time. Well, we just lost one, they moved, they moved down, and you got twenty grand more, same way with all of these. I guess, think you guys had trouble getting the top notch, they can go most anywhere and make more money, running a good operation, you think? Can you think, fool?
I, I, if they're from, if they're from the county line south, I don't even look at them, there's no way we can meet an expectation what they're, what they're used to.
I guess, I guess mine, my thought on this is, if everybody gives a raise, if, if the county gives a dollar an hour raise, straight across the board, okay? If I am the supervisor, elected official, working in whatever capacity, then if I don't wanna give my person that, there's a reason, and I've always been addressing that prior to this coming up.
Correct.
And that's why I'm here to do that.
No, no.
So, you have to talk in that raise.
No, 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 you misunderstood it. What I'm saying, if we give a dollar an hour straight across, then, I'm kinda like Mark in a way, if you don't wanna give a certain person that, you oughta been looking at him pretty much down the road about eight years, not now that you've got something coming up, because it is the look. Well, you may have one that's, let's just say, treading on thin ice, if you're working with it, and try to get him, yeah, to, to tighten up, or, you know, try not to be too rash, or just send you home.
And again, this is what's called a merit raise. And again, that's what's called a merit raise, and a countywide called a privilege raise, they're two different things. And all I'm saying is, we hire TAC to give us advice on the ability that they have, because they deal with this one.
It's just advice.
This is just.
It's not, it's not, it's not the law, it's not, they tell the commissioner, we have to give it to them, you shouldn't tell them that.
I'm not telling anybody that the TAC didn't, and my advice is, and it, what comes from TAC, is you can either call this a cost of living raise, or you can call it a merit raise, or it gets up to y'all, it really is. I'm not saying you have to do it one way or the other, but if you call it a merit raise, which is kind of what you want to do, let me finish, let me finish, let me finish. Well, that's what, let me finish. If that's what you want to do, and if that's what you want to do, then it's there for what it comes with, and I'm not saying you can't do it.
What?
We don't have to call everything anything, you want, that insist that you gotta.
Okay, if you choose not to do it, and we are in a lawsuit, it's on you, but everybody else has to pay for it.
That's alright.
So, with, with that said, we can sit up there, and listen, everybody's brain across the same, everybody's mind across the same. How do you, how do you sit over here, how do I sit over here and say, okay, Joe, you don't deserve the raise?
How do I?
How do I, how do I do that?
Well, because.
Does his bread cost less?
No, because if you, if you, to me, if you do a merit raise, and if you have an employee who's, who's, to me is, and I know it's up to me, but I'm in a sticky situation, okay? I have an employee who, who creates drama, and who, I think, doesn't pull his weight, and he makes the same, let me finish, and he makes the same as every other employee. It's not fair to the employees who go the extra mile to do their, to do a good job, and that's why I want mine, put on a line item, as if I'm a merit base, and that's all I'm asking.
I think, I think we all agree with that. That situation, it should be, and should be the exception as opposed to the rule, I believe in what you're saying, as a general rule, you're gonna get in some trouble if you monkey around that too much.
Yeah.
There should, you should have the ability in certain situations to do what you're told.
And I've, and I've asked Dee Dee on three different occasions, been here, we've talked about it, and she said that she's protecting the county as a whole, and she agrees, and it should be considered a merit base.
But what I'm telling them is, when we consider this a merit raise, there's people who aren't that good with it, and everybody has to do evaluation. So, you just do evaluation calls on the board with all your employees, and say, you, 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 you're getting it, you're not. That's all you have to do.
You're the one trying to pigeonhole this deal, though, don't be coming to me and telling me how, what I gotta do to decide where I wanna go.
I'm giving advice, I'm giving advice, you do what you wanna do, it's on you.
That's fine. I hope, I hope that everybody gets it, I really, really do, but I just think it oughta be up to the fritz. If he decides his employees deserve all of it, that's up to fritz. If Latty decides he's got one, like me, who's, or two, or three, who's lagging, and to, and you sit down and explain to them, look, this is why, this is why you didn't get the full amount. Producing, you'll get the full amount.
Well, it's, the way I really see it coming into play, I didn't really think about existing employees, I'm thinking about, yeah, you got the raise, and somebody quits, and you're gonna start somebody new at it.
And I agree with that.
You wouldn't necessarily start them at the very top.
We don't do that.
That's, that, yeah, when you, when the guys are already there.
No, I don't, that's what I said, I don't. No, I don't, that's what I said, I don't.
We're not a good idea.
What you're talking about, just kind of simplify it. If you got somebody who's problematic in a way, and you go sit down and talk to them, and say, all these guys, they're, they're merit raised, or not, so you're talking about basically giving them a performance evaluation part of it.
There you go. And I think, I think our district clerk does that, too. I think that she, you don't start them in at the top, I mean, she don't, she don't kind of start them in at the top. I think she kind of evaluates them, do them, moves them up. I just had a guy who quit anyways, and I had an employee who wasn't making the, his top pay. So, what I did was, he'd been doing a really good job, so I just moved him into that position. That's what I did. Because he does a really good job.
So, you just want documentation about performance, about evaluation.
And then he says, don't put it, a little bit of paperwork, say, don't-
Hey, I don't have a problem with that.
We, we, we don't even come up with that. Okay.
We have, we have sent it out to every office, we need some of the handbooks.
Okay, we're gonna move into, let's talk about things that are kind of open, if we're going to talk about. What are y'all thoughts about getting the raise and that? I think, it's my position that if it's the will of the court, we can afford a four thousand dollar raise. And, and that's, that's what we gave the hairs right here, but I don't have the fund any more than that. It could be, we can do that this year and make the next, make the difference of the next. I'm, I don't know where we, I don't know how we can afford to do any more than that.
Mr. Caroline, what would four thousand dollars cost us? Fritsch, you know, your property, now, where everybody?
Four thousand?
Seven hundred thousand, I saw.
Seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, that includes salaries, that includes social security taxes. Seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
So, is that road and bridge, too, or that's just?
That's total. General fine would be five hundred and seventy-four thousand, road and bridge. All four precincts would be a hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Well, I think road and bridge oughta come out of general funds, at least, this year.
Y'all got a million dollars left on us, what are you talking about?
Well, we don't ever do that at general funds, everybody else does. They work for general funds.
Mr. Caroline, you do six thousand.
You have to use some of your general funds. This is probably not having to use the fund balance. If you do six thousand, you're not going through the fund balance.
Is that, is that, right now, without the revenue from the?
No, that employee's revenue from the-
What revenue from the?
Three hundred and seventy.
So, and, uh, give me, could you tell us six?
Say, I'll tell you. Six thousand, four hundred dollars, where do you go with three dollars a raise?
Six thousand, it would be a million dollars.
Yeah, a million dollars.
And that would be the only, you have to use your, the fund balance.
So, that's, that's, how much, sixty-two, what was it?
Three dollars, five, two thousand, three hundred. Well, that's, Sheriff's Department, sixty-two forty.
Sixty-two forty?
And Sheriff's Department, they're sixty-four hours a week.
They're twenty-one eighty-four versus twenty-eight.
Sixty-five fifty-two for the Sheriff's Department. For anybody that doesn't know, it works. We can do it with all the council.
That'd be a million, one hundred and seven thousand dollars.
We've got one time anyhow.
I'm just trying to get on the count. So, there are racing people, they work two hours an hour, if you're older, you're above that. So, the twenty-five thousand dollars back, so, who are you waiting?
Get it over with.
So, the other problem that I had, we're giving everybody three dollars a raise, which is sixty, sixty-seven, sixty-four, or the four thousand, whatever it is. These comp times, they're changing.
Yep.
About three dollars an hour, or two dollars an hour, or whatever it is, and it's missing out on lunch.
Yes, it is. And I got, got one guy, and there's got a bunch of comp time, but he's taking off, and he's sending.
Who, you've got? Mark Willis, he needs, he needs to keep some of his.
He got, oh. He got seven, I think.
Yeah, I was sure he had to get some lunch. She'll get this one, she wants that.
I found some ice. Okay, what's this down here? Which one?
I'm not saying nothing, I'm not saying anything.
And since we're on, since we're on a budget, I think, I think some, we have some concerns about, uh, the, uh, Neo position, putting it forward to Sheriff's Department. I think that, uh, some assess the concerns about that. I think, I think that position should be that, and we're gonna have somebody do some kind of building stuff, right, is that the way I?
Well, that's the way it's made, we're gonna need that guy to adopt some kind of building code, we're gonna need somebody to-
Couldn't somebody do that, both of them?
Well, your garden mill requires T coat, your building does.
I mean, I think they need to move that back out. Well, I just put it in there, because I couldn't get anybody that wanted to be- They don't need to go more advanced than that. I ain't forgot you all, no. I know, but I'm talking, I tried to get, Mr. Ashley agreed to take over briefly, and then, I guess he slept over, came to, anyway, he decided, no, thank you, but no thank you.
I just think that maybe we can incorporate that into, you know, like, kill two birds with one stone, maybe that'd be it. Maybe, and let's say something, throw it down the road, you know, build, you know.
Well, they, what I'm saying, I think we need to move that back out, leave it standing.
Oh, I agree.
Whether we do anything with it, come down, later on, if we want to convert that into a, a code person, then we can do it. If it stand along out here by the set, it's gonna be a whole bunch easier to do.
I just thought there were some issues about, I don't think it'd be a long, long period.
Well, if you do the, if you do the garden mill, yeah, but if, if, what I'm saying, we need to move it, in my opinion, move it back out, let it set in its own department. Then if we wanna move that department to the code person, like Lewis, or that, that we're gonna be requesting to do here to keep it?
We'll have some money, yeah.
We got the money, we got already a department, we can rename it, or-
Well, I agree with that, I think that's a good idea, too.
Whatever y'all want to do, I just didn't know, I couldn't get many takers, so I asked all of them, and they didn't like it, too.
Well, they got, they got to have their word of word about it on their own.
Yeah, the sheriff did, um, ask me to do that. I approached him about it, I said, if nobody else could do it.
No, but, yeah, if you're gonna put in a code person-
Translate all into one, one little-
That's coming, that's coming, it's here.
It's coming.
It's just not, because the environmental, the environmental laws, we truck, we did this because- They're down there, and then- They really do, and that way you can dedicate somebody to it, but it's actually law enforcement. They don't, anyway, so they, all of them can go out and do what the environment does. It's a natural for you.
You know, I'm fortunate enough now, there, with, with Ray's guy, that he hired, and Ray Ashley did. I'm fortunate enough that, if I had the situation now, I'd just call Plant, and he'll drive it out there, you know? He'd have to, he takes care of the problem.
And I do the same, too.
I'm just telling that guy, he does, he takes care of the problem.
Well, who did?
Ken Hedley, who works for Ray Ashley, the city shepherd. So, he really does a good job on, on that kind of stuff. He basically works for the city shepherd, which, he calls him on the phone, and, and, like I did with him, just, whatever he's doing, he'll be, he'll do it, he'll do it. He takes care of a lot of issues.
Okay.
Yesterday, yesterday, I want to say, I'll forewarn everybody, some, hold on, thirty-seven hundred dollars worth of tires.
That's what I asked you, how many you needed?
Thirty-seven hundred dollars. Eighty percent, I mean, pick it up, sound of, you did it?
Who did?
We did, we did.
I'm gonna be looking for thirty-seven hundred dollars, too.
I, you're fixing it, I called, I text David yesterday, and I told him, I said, uh, for some reason, precinct two gonna charge that down there, the tire shop, so-
Oh, we went in the same-
So, you're getting one. And David, I just told him to put it on three.
They would put mine, Mark told me to have mine put over here. They said, no.
We need to get that corrected.
No, I know, we know.
What's, what's the name of it?
No, we know. Yeah, we do, we know. It's fine. Oh, ready? Just stand down, put it on three. So, you gotta do, it's real simple, just sign David.
No. We need to get that fixed.
Huh?
I don't mind signing the name.
What was the name of it, though?
Uh, it used to be Safe Tire, now it's, uh, I don't know, uh, USA Recycling or something, I don't know. Yeah, it used to be Safe Tire disposal. Yeah, that's where I'm at. Yeah, thanks, David.
He's good, he's-
Yeah.
I said you're welcome, and do it.
Y'all be thinking, I think the court, pretty much, sounds like everybody thinks we oughta do something with, on the raise thing, you know? Gotta figure out a way to do some difference, but you know, that's, that's.
All right, we'll move to revenue, I'll show you where to get some of it.
I've got some Mark probably.
Sales tax revenue, we did it, five thousand, one, bro.
That's rad. That's, well, I got Mark.
We're in rent.
We had, we had six hundred in the old, the four, the four, we were moving it out.
Sales, right?
Want it up to a hundred?
Up to six hundred.
Do we have six hundred?
If it's wrong, we would, uh, wait.
You realize that revenues go up and down, I'm trying to make conservative, though. If you're pushing to the very limit, you're gonna get burned somewhere, that's all I got to say about that. Well, we have some available in here, but your thoughts, Paul?
All right. What's in, when you were talking about your taxes, everyone? Y'all been noticing the housing market?
It's kind of slowing down a little.
Yeah, it's kind of taking it down a little bit, with land staying pretty flat. I don't know, it's still because, because of the rate, and now, you know, it's more-
Per cent rate, too.
Interest rate, interest rates are hurting, of course.
Hurt anything, what's your impression?
Did y'all get your letter to involve?
Yes.
Y'all really? They tell you what's coming up, and they're saying you should.
They're fixing to go up.
Yeah, that's the third one.
What happened?
Okay. Uh, okay, go to, uh, zero, two, four, three. That'd be the next page on the county sheriff's fees.
Zero, two, four, three.
And right under that is the inmates. So, who's got, got to set that up?
If you go by his contract, it comes out to seven hundred and eleven thousand, seven fifty. I was gonna shoot at less than half of that, three fifty, and hope like heck that we actually get it.
They're not very high, and they're building a new jail in there.
It's gonna take a year. I thought, it's gonna take one year. That's what they told me this other day.
Well, the year before, he collected four sixty-five, they're not the only game in town, but, uh,
well, I know, the deficit's thirty-five dollars, and everybody was jumping on that damn way, but they was thinking, well, I'm not gonna say what I think, tell me what you think, Mr.- I don't know, I bet, I would say, because, uh, you know, I think if we go over two hundred, I think we're really pushing everywhere.
Well, at two fifty. Rich, what do you think, eight hundred?
He got four sixty-five the year before, he, I'm trying to believe some of what he tells me. He says he's also working on federal inmates.
Yep.
I've heard that a lot of times, but they get, they pay more than you guys.
We'll leave it three, everybody?
I don't think.
We'll just leave it three fifty.
Okay, just be clear on this type of change, wait until next week to make it?
No, we're doing ours now.
Or I can change it now?
You can go ahead and put it in there now.
Okay.
You can just make yourself some notice.
Trying to find a way to do it.
We're just trying to, we're trying to get, we're trying to, everybody get ahead of the game here, a little bit.
Okay, I got you.
Say, well, we have P G. there. That's going away, so it's gone.
We have P G.'s, no.
That's how they're funding their new position, they're getting. We, we haven't gotten it this year, I don't believe.
Ain't no money.
That's what he said, the whole state is gone.
Yeah.
And not only that, we're gonna have to, something to keep in mind, okay?
We, we kind of feel on what we guessed, uh, we're also gonna do, fly office spaces.
They didn't call me, David, did I?
Yeah. I said, well, we working on that, remember? Huh? We working on office spaces. Well, we got two, see, we got two offices in there, there you go, over there. So, when that's built, it'll be taken care of.
Hey, I touched on something me and David did the other day about office spaces. You know, we gonna spend a million dollars for that courthouse. Y'all realize what that's gonna do?
Relocation.
We're gonna have to relocate a lot of people. Because, a temporary, because we, and I know you've been here a long time in this court facility, but you don't know where all the lines, water lines, electrical lines, when they start digging and hitting one in, and having to move air conditioners and all kinds of stuff.
Well, when we first started talking about that-
Start thinking about a little of that, too.
When we first started talking about that on the field, the occupation, the big, one of the offices we had, Doug, Mark, and, uh, Jeff, uh, and that's where Shep, Shep, they had, they were there. And we're moving, because you're out of range, we're basically, okay? That's actually court based law, right? You got to go in there, shore, or stuff, uh-
Well, I'm just, you know, I'm just wondering, I was kind of thinking down the road, you know, we might have to push the petitions on the other side over there, that gets some temporary arts conservation. Because you don't realize those places happen here, once we start heading.
We need this building over here, in, in months.
That's, that's exactly right.
Okay, so I'm just saying, we just gonna try, you know, get that in, have it a little bit.
People, you know, outside of here, and, and, you know, like-
I just wanted to, everybody kind of, be aware of what's coming. Sir? Sir?
The liability.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
As far as in, in-
That's something that's gotta be done, y'all.
Two rooms in there, you, and we may have to put camper wall up there, like, now.
That's just something, we, we, that's something that, that all, that money's gotta go far.
Be honest, I didn't know what, what the urgency was on that, we got a room over here, and-
And it's really over here.
That ain't been used. Even if we had, it's a big office, it's a big time to be, for the time being. We are doing, yeah, well, I don't know where else, but, but we got, we may have a certain old installation.
I wouldn't do that, I'd have to get this, we did it work.
I agree.
But I agree. Now, one thing you can find, actually, those four eight three, they're women's houses.
Yes.
Okay, on page, page two, account two oh seven, two oh eight, at the top, those are new accounts. You need to budget a little bit of revenue there, because there's nothing budgeted right now.
For what?
The state fee.
County park facility fee, district park facility fee.
Okay, so, explain that. A some new state fee that the parks have to charge?
Yes.
No, they're not made it.
So, Kevin, how much money's going to go there?
It's, it's from, from-
It's, it's from, from Dave, Lonnie Chet, and.
When did it start?
January first.
Is it January?
You got, all you can go by is the year of the date activity. I guess I put maybe.
Dollar?
Yeah. She said it. That's what I think. That's what she said.
Right, because we're, we're still.
So, does it have strings in that too, or? I don't know.
That account originally was the other county park fees account.
So if it does, then you would have been together anyway, right?
And the judicial separate.
So it's like a special fund.
Yeah, this is special fund.
I don't know that it's a special fund. I think it just goes into generally.
Let's put fifteen hundred on the one and seven fifty on the other.
Fifteen and seven fifty? Don't worry about it.
Look at it, account two sixteen, that's the same thing. It's a new one. You need to put something there.
Two sixteen?
Yes.
Resolution. Well, I'd put about, I guess it started, I'd put about fifteen hundred in there.
Right.
Y'all ready to take it?
Yeah. Two sixteen?
Four hundred and fifty.
You like the quartering?
I order up traction sometime.
You like it?
I don't know how to order it, right?
We have. Just move from this book, which is about twenty-nine, and three hundred to a thousand, and always the ten, so.
I just leave it there.
We can be mad. Two sixteen? Couple more. The next two, come on.
This one I thought we were gonna do last week.
So we have something to do. That was five dollars money, man, it could be that much to do. I left, we left the numbers for three dollars.
Go through a good raise, the sheriff's department, you think, will get up and say you did it wrong?